You know, the word first is. Oh, the block. The word.
Yes, yes. My. Open. Is that it? Um. It. It's. Um. On the console or?
So what do you believe in that? If you did. Sorry, we're gonna try to bring you in. We just have red. These are these are things that are audio there.
That's all he says. On that one, it's the, it was, it didn't say that people.
I do appreciate the follow up. All you highlight. Sorry. Go ahead, Joanna, if you can hear us.
I can barely hear you.
Barely?
Very muffled, but I can begin to hear you. Is there volume that needs to be turned up?
This. Well, this. Um, I'm gonna keep talking and then you let me know if you.
Keep, yeah, keep talk, cuz I can make it out, but it's really faint.
That's the, in the other line, we're gonna mess it a little. Okay, hopefully that's better for.
Can you hear that?
It's a little bit.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now, Joanna?
Um, a little bit better, but not a lot better. It's still really faint. Do you want me to call in?
Yeah, that would work.
All right, let me call in. It is. Is Commissioner Hales able to come in? So, all right.
Down again.
Good. Pass it off some way.
Yeah, yeah. Five about half.
Don't move over here. Yeah, closer than five. But, but her old and doctor old, or?
Then we love and thank him. Yeah, the paper. That was really mean insurance. I've never seen you before. My God, we're gonna keep going. I found that one.
So can you hear me, folks?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear us?
I can, it's, it's not as bad as it was, it's better, it's, if you were a long way away before and now you're closer. I thought maybe a microphone wasn't switched on or something cuz I've obviously got great audio, a great video, but the audio is nonexistent and now is a little better.
Yeah, I think we will still be far away and that's how we'll be for this meeting, apologies to everyone. Um, I have to invest with the hardware on this all in one unit because the um, microphone does not work, but the video does. So. We will figure something out there.
Okay, thanks, Ben. And I'll, I'll try and speak loudly.
You have the echo.
All right, we're ready for public comment for those items that are not on the agenda tonight. Do you have any public comment?
Yes, Mary Verpar Stevenson. Um, just a couple of things, I, I think, as y'all may be aware, Highway fourteen is in a pretty bad shape. And I'll be talking to the gorge commission tomorrow about the fact that if it's going to be redone, then we should underground as much as we can along the way. Um, of all the, this is the scenic area and it is not a designated scenic highway, but it is a scenic highway. And I think the municipality should promote that too. Um, that's tourism. Um, and undergrounding stuff would really get rid of some of those lines. When I first came here, we only had two lines on the telephone pole here, now there's thirteen. Uh, they, uh, unless they make them bigger and more visible, they're not gonna be able to hang any more stuff on it and the P U D makes money by renting them out, of course, but, and I'm not sure how that would work with undergrounding, but I would like to see that. And, um, I have not heard anything about the broadband, uh, uh, issue in our community, I know it's not your purview, but, um, it's, it's something, uh, the A C P program, the connectivity program, uh, affordable connectivity, is going away and people in our community need broadband. I mean, you almost can't do without it anymore. Uh, you, you don't get weather, well, if you have a telephone, I guess you can get weather reports, but you're not gonna get news, the and other things. I don't use my phone for anything but calling, texting, and weather. Um, so, you know, there's things to do in our community to improve the lives of our community members and I've always thought undergrounding, especially within the city limits too, it would be a good idea as, as we improve the streets, underground the utilities. And, uh, it's time for an internet utility. A national internet utility. That's all I've got today, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Do we have anybody else? That would like to, uh, offer any comment?
No hands, we didn't consider instructions, but you can raise a hand for those on the phone by pressing star nine.
Okay. So we'll close our public comment period and move on. We have the minutes for our January twenty second meeting. Folks had a chance to look those over?
Well, we stick with that.
We have a motion and a second to approve our minutes for January twenty second. Consider discussion, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Charlie, you gonna say aye?
He looks, he does look present.
Yeah.
Okay, motion down. And we'll go on to our first item of new business, which is our planning commission vacancy. And then you wanna?
I will introduce the fact that we did advertise as, um, we're supposed to do for filling vacancy. Um, solicit letters of interest from community members, we received one. Uh, Mr. Lawson interviewed with you before, um, point two, when, uh, Commissioner Hales uh, also interviewed. Uh, he submitted his statement again, he was not able to be here today tonight, so, um, it's a force of yours now about whether to, uh, hold off on the decision making and say you can interview him or, um, make some recommendations helpful without interviewing.
Since we've interviewed him previously, does that make a difference? And he was disappointed to, something or other, what was that, there was the, um.
Exit, well.
Yeah.
So could he call in and take the emergency, so.
So we can hold this over until our next meeting. Um, I don't know that it's that sensitive. Now, I guess I, you know, not to ease the good character, I mean, I think we had a good conversation with him the last time he was here. But, yeah, I, I definitely wish we would have a greater interest in coming in and sitting on these boards and, and helping. And so I was, I was disappointed that we didn't have a more robust response, uh, to that, um.
Well, people have other things going on in their lives. Not to say we're bored, it's not.
So what, what's the sense, do you wanna just go hold it over to the, to our next meeting so we can, you know, have him back and chat with it? You wanna make a decision tonight?
Well, I think, since Charles can't even, he's not even able to be involved. And obviously, there's three of us here in a forum, but it's still not a complete group. Like we might be capable to do that more particularly.
Okay, and then what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, um, I appreciate that he applied again.
I agree.
Um, and like you said, it's not an emergent situation, so, great, talk some in March.
All right. Okay, then we have the zoning text amendment that you put together. That is an interesting one because I look at it more as just almost housekeeping, just sort of going through and sort of formalizing some of the stuff that's been done in the past or making things consistent. So, but, maybe, am I reading it correctly?
I think so, um, as discussed during the, um, work planning session, we reduced the front yard, we did not reduce the street side yard, uh, in the R three district. And so it does do a wide housekeeping, putting up something in my scope. In this, I am, um, putting my idea that you would reduce the street side setback, not the front yard setback, in the R two district, but to provide some of that, um, range, uh, between what's the R one is supposed to be and what the R three is supposed to be, uh, currently the R two district. There's a poor job of falling in between the two when it comes to the allowed uses and the, uh, the natural and the standards of the zone. And so if you're implying to be vast, um, presenting it here, uh, did you, you an assessment of how that impacts people on the ground? Uh, so there's a lot of development that's out there in these zones and a lot of it appears, I say appears to you because I'm doing this with, um, the assessment map and so the tolerance for error between where I put that building wall and the street side lot line is large, but if it was, um, twelve feet or closer by nine measurements, I said that's probably, uh, nonconforming to the existing code and so in case a calamity or fire, um, or, um, building falling down some way, they would have to move that, they wouldn't be able to access that kind of footprint, they'd have to use it to be in conform with the code. If that changes moving the R two district, it would be less of a, it doesn't have to be. So, uh, proposal in there, that was, that R two district proposal was not included in the, um, work plan where the R three was. And then the other one, it is certainly more of a housekeeping where you conducted the interpretation of salon uses in the R three district, um, um, allowed a permit to continue and included the different permits, uh, it's not per time that that's happened, uh, so this would make it difficult to say that salons are, it's in the, uh, R two district. So free, free what I believe are small, um, efforts here, uh, asking you to, uh, decide what the appropriate scope for the amendments is to, to support the public review. Um, what's, uh, public involvement effort we wanna go through, uh, before you feel comfortable in giving sort of recommendation? And, uh, who's responsible for having that goes around public involvement.
And you've had, you know, that definitely public involvement worksheet or process. Keep it moving on.
George, trying to find your time to get this done?
No, um, for the, the writing of the text, uh, I feel like it's all in there and so my work into that part is done, the work now becomes public involvement and, and I'm thinking, so, I'm it can go as quickly or slowly as you want, the desire of the public, United States.
Actually, my sense is again, this is cleaning up some inconsistencies, I guess, or making things more consistent, I, and, and we're more reflective of what the actual situation is out there on the ground in terms of the side street setback. And the salon, that's just formally documenting something that we, we've already put in the practice. So. You know. I don't, you know, I don't know, I, I don't see a real need for, you know, for a public outreach, something like that.
What's the practical implications of doing that in our, in our existing infrastructure?
So for in the R two district.
What's about doing that?
Quickly.
Oh. Well, nothing was.
R two district, uh, R two district, um, there are ninety parcels, thirty of those are actually corner lots. And thirty of the, or twelve of those, so forty percent of the corner lots in the horn are apparently nonconforming to the fifteen foot setback.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Many of those would, um, become conforming, so they, they could rebuild. The R three district, um, also thirty corner parcel, there, so those are suspected nonconforming. Uh, they would benefit from this in some way. It's not, uh, across the board reduction for ten feet, it still has those, um, pedestrian safety protections that we put in place in the R three district, so, um, the length of the driveway, it'd be a last seventy twenty feet to, uh, prevent blocking sidewalk. Uh, and, uh, visibility control on the side of the drive. If they keep putting, on the corner, putting some driveway on the corner lot, thank you.
Then refresh my memory on the, on that twenty feet, is that from the edge of the right away? So it's not the edge of necessarily the case, but what I'm thinking about is that twenty feet doesn't include the sidewalk. Okay, I was trying to, I got some thinking about that, I think, yeah, I know we've talked about that, so, okay.
Well, as long as the reduction doesn't look like part of the people.
I believe it does the opposite, makes it easier, some will not, some will still have to think of footprints, you won't be able to access the full footprint of what's, um, closer than ten feet.
So what do you suggest for public?
I would like to reach out to all of those corner lot owners, at least, um, where the change is impactful, um.
What they're ninety of them?
Sixty. Corner, sixty in the corner, so.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to do. Again, it's, it's hard for me to imagine anyone is gonna, is gonna complain about that, but.
Well, even if you change it and they're nonconforming, still they're grandfathered in, right?
Until there's some fire alert pointed, but if they're not getting a letter to say move, move the building, so it's kind of required.
Yeah, if you tell them what the current setback is and what you're, you know, what you're proposing, yeah, I would imagine most folks are gonna have an objection or something like that. What do you think, Tom?
Well, from the historical standpoint, the reason that we made a change in the R three was because there was some financial interest on behalf of development and that their new construction was having trouble fitting on the lot. And so in the R three, which is kind of the most, uh, dense of the residential, I think the consensus was that we would allow that leeway protecting the, the right away and the, uh, pedestrian sightline access, and as long as they could meet those standards, you know, for still safe, you know, uh, results that were, were comfortable. Um. As I looked at the R one and R two, both of those being more traditional residential, and of course, in both those districts, you can put in an accessory dwelling unit with some restrictions on where to place that. Um, the R one has a twenty foot front and a five fifteen twenty and twenty, the R two is basically a mirror of that same thing. It makes sense for the R three for a corner lot, that as long as it wasn't violating that, that access in public sightline, um, that we could reduce that for ten feet like the front. Uh, however, in the residential, I think it should stay the fifteen feet from here or what's the more traditional residential housing. And I think if there is any nonconforming, I mean, to rewrite on the assumption that a building's gonna burn down and may cause an issue, I think isn't really the best planning method to divine. So that, that would be my only thought on that, the, uh, the wording for the um, salon thing, I think we've all done that, so, and I think two of the three I would be in favor of for.
So you think, you were thinking that in the R two, then it should stay at fifteen?
I would, I would keep it at fifteen.
Why are you picking on salon? There is that?
There was a, an application for a renewal for a lot. So the, um, the salon on Lockwood Drive got the initial approval as something as a professional office, um, under the landing categories over there at that time when it came back. We were finding that, that's not a professional office, but it is a use that we could consider allowing, so, um, they could consider allowing it and allowed it. Uh, so, so, or if you're building, building, um, at that time, so.
I don't know. So R two is basically like a respect for two individual.
It does math percent.
So you are right, that's a more of a residential-ish.
But I, I don't know of any that are actually due flex.
Yeah. But like two roadhouse is not a lot.
Right, I mean, what we think of as professional due flex
Yeah.
is, is not there.
Right, okay, there's more residential, so I like that.
One thing that I wasn't able to put in here, uh, I, I wasn't able to figure out how to write it when we reduced the, um, minimum lot width, but for the R two in comparison to R one, we, now we created a tempo for narrower lots, moving that some side setback, but another reason why I feel like it's appropriate to report to you guys, and I, I didn't know how to type that, so it was difficult. Yeah, and again, that would only show up in a new lot development, not in a certain lot, and so, again, we're talking about the development stage where somebody's coming in and wanting to build something and whether we need to make a state adjustment for the potential that somebody may come in and do that versus preserving what typically the community sees as a residential zone.
Yeah, I you've still got, like, you know, a number of, of lots out there that are sort of nonconforming even in R two, what'd you say, forty, about forty percent? No, it wasn't that high.
Forty percent of the corner lots, so twelve of the ninety. Would be fair going off the property trader site, uh, and being a variation if from east of what they're determining to what actually is, without actual survey, it's kind of subjective.
Well, you know, my thought is if you've got a fairly substantial percentage that is already not in compliance with that, you know, how do we, how do we say that the rest of the folks you know, can, can be the same thing? I, and I'm okay with it, but only in the provision that we maintain that pedestrian vision requirement out there. I don't wanna see that. That's, so, so, you know, if we wanna keep it at fifteen, I can go that, but I think there is a rationale to, you know, to go to ten in the R two. That's my thought anyway.
Blending those topics together a little bit, if, if you're concerned about the including that within the scope, would that um, make a wider public involvement effort more for the R two district or? Well, I mean, there's more of the R three and that's pretty much what we're accommodating. There's more of the R three, and that's pretty much what we're accommodating. And we're going with two, have a separate island, if we are to, like, Rose Lawn subdivision and then. Uh, Frank Johns, which are, are basically built out, we're not talking about any, anything new potentially being a go in there. So the only thing that changes is whether, if you were gonna do an accessory dwelling unit, now that can be closer to your neighbor's house. But I think that was something that we heard as a question of, what do you mean residential dwelling unit? Is somebody gonna have a, a rental unit right next to my window now? And so there was that voice and of that concern of, yes, in, in essence, we're creating more density. And kind of the, the public feedback that we got was, I don't really want somebody any closer than they are in your yard. And so if we did do a ten-foot, that would mean that as long as they were within that thirty-foot radius of the distance structure. Now that new rent, rental unit could be closer to their neighbor.
But is this not on a side street and having a neighbor? Is that what we're talking about?
It's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, definitely a concern, but.
We're not making the decision tonight, no, I think we're simply, uh, you know, what level of outreach, uh, should we have? You know, so that when we have a formal public hearing, you know, we, we get the level of participation that. We'd like to have.
Well, and if R two is basically built out, I like your idea of going to people.
Mm-hmm.
Who are non-conforming, you know, discussing or reaching out.
Yeah, and I, I would wanna do as all those corner parcels, because I don't wanna be in a place to. Cause any, if it is fifteen minutes, thirty, error based on the stuff.
Right, right.
Go to all, all on those, quote, ones that wouldn't have that side street restriction. I think you just, I think, but I think just going out and notifying those folks is probably sufficient.
If I do a public hearing, it's definitely not a.
Or what's that?
Was it worth that?
Do you have to have a public hearing?
A public hearing needs to be held by the city, um, oftentimes it'll double up, then it's gonna be helpful, occasionally it'll be one or the other.
Hmm, okay. Well, if, 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 if the discussion shows that there's questions, so how we want this public involvement, there's a chance. Especially if the people who would be affected, and it doesn't hurt to put the word out there, because you never know. Who might come in and ask some questions for something new, if you know.
But your proposal is to go out to all the affected properties. So I know the answer. Yeah, I think I would.
What's, what's in there?
Um, R one, what, four of the lot, four of the lot, um, go to R three.
Hmm, is anything affected up there?
Um.
Is it, is it built on the R three?
There are two, um, corner lots that are up here up there.
Hmm.
I always, I always forget that. You're, you have an exception granted by. So, say you were in a non-conforming by T T, and your house burned down. There is a method that you can petition to have a variance for that situation, because it was not.
Rebuild on the.
It was not of your doing.
Mm-hmm. I think.
There's nothing that's explicit in that, somebody could apply for a variance, they could move a variance, um. The criteria they want for granting that or not, super coming to that situation. Uh. These are looking to apply to my lots, if I'm not a development, my lot if it moves in all my days. And I'm not getting some special privilege from the heartbeat that's proven before, right? So there are others in the thought, the variance? Yeah, I think, I don't know, man, I think we talked about that, and that's what, we used to have that second option, so that if it was something. There's a great big tree that's really pretty, and obviously it's a benefit to the community. Will you allow me to change my location of my house so that I can accommodate that? And usually that was kind of a rubber stamp, but if you had to apply to that, and it had to document. So, um, I mean, if that, if that's the concern that somebody's house is gonna burn down. I, I would much rather see a mechanism that allows for that variance to happen than to. Be kind of a broad, broad stroke saying, in the worst-case scenario, we're gonna have zero lot lines, because. You know, that, that could happen, a landslide could happen, so, I don't know, that's just my.
Couldn't that be conditional use?
Conditional use goes with, uh, specific.
So in terms of public outreach, are we okay then just going out to all the affected property owners? In R two and the R three?
Inviting them to, I think I heard hearing, but then workshop was also considered.
Would it be different?
A workshop doesn't require a decision. Uh, that's my, whatever.
It could be a preference, I mean, often your hearings are workshops. The public goes up and takes the workshops, and question the, etc., instead of a statement of. Like, we're just considering something, so accommodate it, yeah.
If these proposals had greater implications in terms of. Land use restrictions, I would say a workshop would be appropriate, but I'm not so sure given the nature of our meeting. That a public hearing is, is probably the, the best way to approach it.
Well, you'll see once you start sending out letters and what you give back. And then you make one work for them to make a decision, you know, like, you have, you have ninety people. Coming, you already have like ten, uh, yeah.
I think, I just see that both, uh, the verbiage for the salon and the R three, uh, side street. I think it's gonna have very little, uh, proposition or any question at all. However, when you get into R one and R two districts, and you start to mess with the most traditional neighborhood. That's when you get a little bit more to that, so if you wanted to make it real easy. Someone just leave R two the way that it is, I think R two and the salon thing was basically the revision to public. Statement, you say, hey, this is a proposal at this meeting, if you have any comments, feel free to share. And shout it out. Or we can go the long way.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to promote reasoning the process, but.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm still inclined to sort of have a hearing and see what those folks in the R two think about ten or fifteen feet. Uh, and use that as our, as our sort of a cue there.
So then, being upfront, that coming out of the hearing, um, not expecting to make a decision or recommendation. But to be able to reevaluate next steps, so if you go into it and, and there is more concern. From, uh, change about changing this to a traditional neighborhood, then. We're upfront saying that, you know, we're, we're okay with some of those, and, yeah.
Well, I'm not, not resting on that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if there was time sensitive, I'd say really just to knock out the R two and. Next year we'll figure it out.
Okay. Going for a next one, I think. And again, this was pretty interesting in terms of the FEMA update and. I see no net rise. And it's pretty, a lot of this, uh, it's always gonna have been there, I, I know in a lot of the, a lot of the permitting, but. I see it more pervasive, I think, except for, except for. But Ben, why don't you give us every review?
Um, it has been several years that, uh, you and I have been working. In our local region to assess, um, streams and, uh, effective rainfall to determine. Where things are likely to flood or not flood, so if they're going to start, um. Uh, insurance rates appropriately based on that likelihood of flooding, uh, they have completed that process. Um, completed for them, that they have, uh, done all the, uh, scientific analysis of, uh, floodplains. They've developed draft floodplain map, they've done all those maps out to, um, uh, impacted property owners. Thought field through the graph map, uh, heard the wheels, rewrapped the things, and. To be classified in photo of federal records.
For all the registered?
Um. Kind of the regular, yeah, but, and so when that becomes effective, uh, we do have regulations that are. Uh, uh, consistent with those, otherwise are, uh, floodplain property owners. Or are insured by the flood insurance program, may not be insured until we get our off the ballot, so. Uh, it's a, um, few of this, for a situation.
Yeah.
Uh, and do it in the way you told them to do it, for a situation, there are a couple of, uh, recommendations. Uh, that are in there, familiar programs, um. Function better, and then do a good analysis of roads, that's a.
Hmm.
Do what you can do, if there's any, what they, they sound like, it is, that's it.
Yeah, well, I watched, I saw some clarifications in the definition. I didn't see anything there that really levied any additional restrictions, you know.
So what's in the yellow section?
That is for highlighting, that is for highlighting, so I can't really see the.
But there is something there that's hiding?
Well, there's some dates and, uh, and numbers.
Yeah.
Not more than.
There was hiding, and it was, if you look below, where it has in brackets, community needs to keep it so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what's, what's hiding there is a word function that has a fill in the blank, you know, second.
And that finds more than blank, or in person for more than blank.
More than what, ten thousand dollars?
And those, that, that they should be struck and should say yearly.
And prevent the, something from, uh, taking such other lawful actions. So who is that that's not gonna take other lawful actions?
There's a fine thing on this, right?
Yeah.
I would, uh, consider, you know, it's no longer the building, this is just an example, so, yeah, this is what, when.
Long as you get that in there, yeah.
Marlon, I kinda wanted a phone call about it.
You couldn't find any smaller, uh, font, could you?
So i- i- in essence, basically what we're doing is we're enabling those folks to, in those designated. Flood, flood areas, flood prone areas, to get several flood insurance, and if we don't make this change. They don't get flood insurance, and if they're flooded.
Well, there are some places that don't get flood insurance, because they're too dangerous, right?
Not here, I believe that there are places.
Well, there are other, yeah.
That's not the impact here, um, I worked really hard to get it onto the first page of the memo about what the impact is here.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're first team up and down, and we think that what's susceptible to flooding is flooded. And so we really don't deal with the flooding that's here, and, um, the changes to this largely reflect that. Uh, the nineteen eighty there amount have sixty-four parcels that have floodplains. That are flood hazard areas on them, um, but of those parcels, only seven, um. Have structures in that area, the changes go from sixty-four to sixty-six, and from seven structures, um, required to have floods in. Sixty-three.
Hmm, okay.
Or not, one of those, the N R two bridge, what they, uh, failed to set up water, no, it's not, um. All three of them are one day along, after you've actually bridged, um, to your final, you know, one, two, three. Right, that is. Um. Maybe an example in the, of the outreach that was conducted by, uh, FEMA when they're setting up the maps. And I, um, specifically picked this example because I'm making an assumption here, that you're looking at the key parcels that. Were added.
Oh, is that what they do?
On this map, I think it's an assumption, there could have been other changes, but there are definitely key parcels that show up here. That were not in, that did not have areas of identified floodplains on them, under the existing map. The ones that will take effect in the, um, the cabin at the bottom of the, the book.
Hmm.
For that, and the, um, undeveloped parcel in the, it's the, uh, stormwater facility.
Yeah.
Has some flood prone areas.
The cabin is talking to me.
It's down at the bottom. So there's a.
I'm trying to think of where it is, which is the rhythm.
But the cabin itself is well out of floodplains, and they're not required to have.
Hmm.
Flooding.
Yeah. Hmm. Interesting.
So seeing three questions for this, what's the appropriate scope, do you wanna include those optional, uh, elements for review? Uh, what's the scope of public outreach, can you, for example, for that public outreach?
You know, Ben, I think this is similar to that last one, I think I just go back out to those, those properties that are covered by the extensive motion. And let them know, you know, that these changes are made, and, and what the implications are. Because really, the implication is it's just preserving their, their ability to get flood insurance.
If you're gonna have an impact, you have to.
Yeah, I, I'd be surprised, but, you know, you know, stranger things happen, but. I, but that's my sense, I, again.
And it's not a big job if there's three properties. There's no way to ensure the structures, they're not worried about the property itself.
Yeah, uh, I, if you were physical contact, um, the four, so they, they now have the option to remove that from their internal.
Right, right. It is expensive.
It is expensive.
Hmm. I like that.
Um, so direct out to the impacted property owner, uh, public hearing before you all, or a public hearing for the city council. City council.
No, I don't know, I, why don't we do it here?
What, now we're going to say the.
I, I, but I think we can do it, I think it's more expeditious and efficient if, if we just do it, so.
Okay, we'll work on that, and, um, I think we've had to do enough time, uh, to do all that for the next meeting.
You know, the property that supports, uh, the floodplains?
No, they're not.
It's because it's, you're in a dam in World Two, which makes.
The prop, there, there are areas, the property areas are flooded.
Yeah, I, I, I know, but you could still get a thousand year storm, and the, they won't open the floodgate if they're gonna flood Portland.
They won't have to, you know, first, first, so do that and go all the time, yeah, they wouldn't have to.
Good luck. Something on the scale.
That out there.
Something on the scale of the Mizzou floods, then we won't have to worry about it.
Close up there.
Surf's up.
That would be it.
Okay, Ben.
Yeah. That's, um, all I have on that.
Now we're on to fifteen of the reports. And like you said, the annexation committee.
Hmm.
Has met in sort of last meeting, so we, we don't have anything, uh, to report. Again, we were sort of hoping, uh, that the sewer issue would. Get resolved and that would give us then, I think, a basis to think about, you know, how do you approach annexation and extending service to the Indian and corporate area there, so. Um.
There are a few bills up there about extending the U D A and providing service rates, but we've been following them on the B O P. Parking, and you have the per use, and you can all work with it from.
We, um, need to schedule what I think can be the last part of the meeting, and, uh, so we've got the data that's, that's now collected in December, all, um, current and presentable. And so we present classes admitting, giving the sort of general.
Well, yeah.
I'll probably look someone up.
Implementment projects to, uh, prioritize and then, uh, it'll come here to you all. Um, where we'll look at zoning codes, things that was, uh, to, um, related to parking. So, uh, presenting on those few times that two that I'm remembering are allowing, sort of, uh, canyon move, on-site parking. Uh, yeah, movement trucking, um, the business thing, um. And the second one would be, uh, seeing if there are reductions to the parking requirements, but.
Mm-hmm. No, it's, there's an in-lu fee situation. It's obvious, it's gonna take some time for any in-lu fee to. Create a substantial enough fund to create any parking. Is there any way to front and load that fund? From other, from another funding source or something, and then be able to, to have those in-lu fees sort of offset that and allow those, that, you know, the funding. Come back. Because other than that, you could.
Wait, yes, it's possible.
Anything is possible.
Because I was just thinking, you, you know, if you looked at in-lu fees, it could be years before you've got enough money to actually create any additional parking.
Yes and no. A lot of the improvement projects that will be presented are doing some new driving. Um, like the add, removing yellow and, and adding the, um, so those are getting, you see, projects.
Yeah.
Will be identifying as to, so now it's only a calculation of the fee.
Well, okay.
But that would be great. I mean, if there were grants or something out there regarding. That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Well, the city does not have property that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of unusual for a municipality not to have property.
Yeah. Well, their, their land ratings have poor, they have enough land.
Where?
With the city owned? Yeah, yeah, and, uh, those are growth areas.
City owned land within the city limits.
And it's second alone.
Probably on like courthouse.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Man, that's annexing a property.
Yeah, I mean, but you can't put any parking on it. There is no parking, like, property that is only a given.
Not a perfect place to put a lot.
Utilized, yeah.
For a park plan, I mean, how's that?
We just got, um, uh, the. Updated draft, um, deliverable there, uh, today, and so, uh, we will do, um, secret analysis and public engagement, uh, on that draft and bring it back to you all.
Okay.
What, what do we have to see?
I thought that was a good conversation. Um, and I like that effort. I just. I really want to see that coordination across the different agencies. If that's really gonna work.
Is the plot I'm reading forward or is it?
It's included as a priority still in this draft. Um, there is the other term in that, uh, it becomes a. That the whole project would not be viable. Um, if it is viable, it's in here and so vote for funding if we find out that it's not viable before the, uh, plan is adopted, then that's, you know, right.
Yeah, there's growing opposition in the community. I was really shocked that, uh, at how much, and. I'd never have liked it myself, but, uh, I was, uh, surprised that how many people from different parts of the area, uh, complained about it. To the community.
I, but I've been surprised that now we're seeing the opposition and, you know, how many years has it been out there?
Well, people don't oppose it until you're actually at the point of doing something, you know, how many years ago, what, twenty fifteen? Yeah, when it first, and then nothing happened for god knows how many years, and then suddenly it was in the spotlight and then. People were paying attention.
All right, you know, it's surface various times and I, I did have to agree with some of the comments on the, on the survey out there that. You know, gave them, gave people three options, but didn't give them the fourth option of none of those above, which I think was probably. It, it is an afterthought, probably it should have been included there, I think that.
Yeah. I made some comments about that. Yeah, you should always include that, no action option. So what's going on with the bridge? The B N S F bridge? And so resentment keeps getting bigger and bigger.
I don't know anything about it.
Well, yeah, I, I have to contact them because I copied you on the last message I sent to them, uh, because they have a wetland there that they're slowly choking. Cause that resentment gets bigger and bigger. I mean, are they putting a huge trestle there or?
Looks like they were removing what they put up.
I think.
Well, the trestle is gone, the, the one that was there.
Right.
But the thing that they're building up, I'm wondering if they're building all that stuff up to put the big trestle up down at Reno. That trestle is huge.
I, I don't think they're doing that. They poured another sort of concrete pier outside, uh. Uh, on, you've got the, the west landing pier.
Yeah.
For the bridge, and then there's a, a shorter pier that just. Just to the, to the left of that as you're looking out through there. And I, 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 I've been wondering whether or not they're looking at how that current comes through there. And they wanted something to deflect that current off of that, from keeping, undercutting that, that, that footing.
Yeah, they were panicking when the water was flowing really fast.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean, the last time I went by, it looked like they were removing, like, the ripraps on the eastern side to open that, you know, where the old tugboat.
Yeah.
Landing was.
Yeah, and they bought in a big crane, so I assume they're gonna take out that.
The temporary boat, yeah, and so I, I wonder if they're slowly going to kind of return that, but I think. You know, that issue of, of the water, I think surprised them. They certainly didn't expect that, because.
Oh, law precincts will always flow really fast and furious.
But they got, they got.
It's high today, too.
Pretty panicky and, and when they were in such construction mode, well, yeah, they just maybe keeping that footing up a little bit, yeah, completely. I'm wondering what it is.
Uh, any thoughts of the day, Ben?
Just, um, one link to an article from the Atlantic. There was a different type of critique that I seen, so I wanted to come with you on. And a couple of newsletters that I usually draw from, so this was, uh, was the, I think it was a race-based critique of, uh, suburbanization, so. And it's a, a fairly unsustainable model, um, development model, uh. Possibly, uh, rehabilitating structures is, um, being born by the third generation owner of, of the houses. So no longer, the house, it's no longer hot dog houses, and they're often, um, built by, um, people with left immune. Um, in this case, they were, uh, saying that, uh, bringing Ferguson, um, is very as an example where there was. A lot of the, um. I don't know how to even say that, but, uh.
The blood slides made it mad, and they're there fully.
Start that, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Rachel discord, uh, that was there, so, um, and it's, and what, uh, for. I'm doing, and it cares, yeah.
Um, the bill about lot splitting, uh, it looked like it's passing, it got passed on the Senate. I don't know how it affects, uh, Susan's.
Have a monitoring.
Yeah, it's.
You're wondering, because we've got a cutoff on Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
It's tough working, so.
They had, oh, oh, it's thousands of bills that were dropped and going. I don't know how they're gonna do that.
Well, it's been, uh, truly remarkable for choice selection in terms of, when it dropped off, and they, they kept coming. Gee, even after they came into session, they still dropped more though.
Well, they have the American Dream Home Bill, look at us, and it's, uh, that what they, what it was, well. We need to build more housing because we don't have, uh, houses because we have so many homeless people, so let's just expand, uh. Ah, God, yeah. Uh, uh, there's, there's a couple of those still, still, I think, in committee.
Mm-hmm.
But hopefully they'll die.
Any other business for us on that?
Well, I need a motion.
Got a motion, the second all papers they got?
I think we've been, that's less than an hour with all the complications, you know, you might tell them, I'm not sure they're hurt. Who might still be here as the lights go out.